The council work session, Monday, September 12th, 2016. There'll be a regular meeting following this one. So we're all present except Councilman Campbell will not be attending. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that's at 3.1. The fire chief will provide the council with the information on new revenue opportunity with Phoenix Health Plan, Inc., as it relates to Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program, Community Paramedicine. The fire chief will also provide updates and progress on the community's paramedic, paramedicine regional pilot program and ambulance service in the region. Welcome. We're anxious for this, you know. I think everybody's happy about this idea.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, as you said, we'll be updating council on our current grant that we have through Vitalist, our formerly St. Luke's Health Initiative, also on a new revenue grant that we have, and then also the ambulance service in the region. And then we'll allow for questions. There's a small break in between the community paramedicine and the ambulance, so I'll allow questions then.
Just let me know.
So just as a reminder, last time I had presented to you in the end of May, we talked about our use of 911 system for non-emergencies. And these were our numbers since January 1st, 2015. And we had 81 patients that were accounting for 674 emergency medical service calls. Again, these were all variations, but these were ones that met our definition of three or more times in a month, or 12 or more times in a year, that these same 81 patients were calling for these services. We also had, in a different data set, we had 462 patients that were admitted to the hospital and then are now accessing 911 within 30 days of their discharge from the hospital. So we definitely identified that as a gap in the healthcare system. 872 patients were seen in the emergency department that are now accessing the 911 system within 30 days of their discharge from the emergency department. So again, numbers that we've been talking with our healthcare partners about, but these are certainly rising. From the previous time I had presented to you, which was at the end of December of 2014, we had seen actually a 71% increase, 49% and 86% increase in these numbers from the previous time. So big jumps in those numbers, and we'll continue to see those fluctuate as we go through time. Community paramedicine really is helping coordinate the care for patients that are using the 911 system as their primary healthcare system. But we're there to try to help solve their medical needs in trying to do that proactively as opposed to the 911 system in a reactive mode. It's still a very new and evolving model, but more and more agencies are getting on board with this type of a program. So in May of 2016, I had presented to you the grant that we received, and we're sharing it with the five other cities. This is $125,000 grant. A majority of that money is going to pay for the personnel to go out and see the patients, and then 36% of it is for training, development, and other necessary minor equipment. We're using an existing vehicle in the fleet. There was a PD vehicle that was due to be retired, and we're holding it over for a short period of time. And then any other equipment's coming from our existing stock. Now, this is a new pilot program that we've received. This is from Tenant Healthcare. They are the owner of the Abrazo hospitals, amongst other hospitals across the country. But they also have a Phoenix Health Plan. It's within their tenant umbrella. So through the relationships that we've developed with Stan Homer, CEO at Abrazo West, he was able to introduce me to the chief medical officer for Phoenix Health. And we began having discussions for about a year on this program. She had implemented similar programs in Indianapolis and saw a lot of success there. Would like to see it start here. So this will be for a one calendar year. It will run concurrently with our other grant. All five cities are involved in this program as part of the negotiation. They have 4,000 patients in their database that live in those five zip codes. So just as a reminder, it's Avondale, Surprise, Peoria, Sun City, and then Goodyear is the fifth. But they have 4,000 patients in their database that they would view as high-risk patients for them. They would like us to see the top 10% of those patients, so 400. Will also be assigned a case coordinator from Phoenix Health Plan. So when we do meet the patient onsite at their home, and now we want to refer them to other resources, this is the Phoenix Health Plan patients, then we could refer them back over to the case manager or case coordinator and help facilitate that patient's care after we leave. These patients are again at high risk for readmission to the hospital. That's something that the hospitals in the health plan is trying to avoid. So this pilot project is $120,000, and the agreement reads that we would pay, we would be paid $10,000 per month. We've been working with the legal office to get a sub-grantee agreement, and we would be able to then pay the other cities, the other four cities in on the grant, the money that they would expend to go out and see these patients as well.
We're gonna wait, can we wait till, you're not finished with it?
No, I'm not, no.
Can you just, yeah, wait, please.
Okay.
I should've made that announcement, just as a reminder, okay? Go ahead.
Again, we will have a case coordinator assigned to the project. Any additional cost for training or other necessary equipment could come out of this money if necessary. But again, we're using the same vehicle, same personnel, so not much difference at all. Again, still using the two-person unit. We feel for safety, this is very, very important for us. It is the national standard out there. About 77% of agencies are using a two-perimedic system. And the other entity, so just not Goodyear's contributing a resource. So for us, it would be the south unit, it would be, Avondale will contribute the other person in the other seat. So one person from Goodyear, one person from Avondale, and then Peoria, Surprise, and Sun City would split that vehicle amongst the three. We do anticipate this being a 12-month pilot project, which again will run concurrently with the Vitalist Health Grant. We'll continue to build and define our training program. We're also gonna be looking at a true cost per call information. And that was one of the conversations that we have with Phoenix Health Plan, is truly trying to understand what it is costing us per call to run out on these patients. And that's how we kind of got to that point of $120,000. We still wanted to define and establish more outcomes. Rio Rico, who recently received a HERSA grant, which is a rural health grant, they are taking the lead for the state on developing more performance metrics and performance benchmarks for community paramedicine. So as we start to build ours, we'll be contributing to their system and to their growth of benchmarks. And then we would like to do a customer satisfaction survey at all our patients that we see either 24 or 48 hours post-visit. Here's some of the success measures that we've been using and at least striving for with this grant. And you can see a lot of those are up there now. And again, they're still in development. We still feel like, we're still trying to get a handle on exactly the information we wanna gather. To date, with the current grant, we've developed a lot, quite a bit, and I'll read off just some of the big ones. One of those is the training program, which will start at the end of September. So it's gonna be the last week of September for 24 hours, not straight, but three eight-hour days. We'll provide training to the selected paramedics from the five cities. We've also developed a monthly continuing education schedule. Our goal is to ultimately provide up to 72 hours in the year of training to these medics. We've also developed the post-visit follow-up questions. And I think the biggest piece is the resource development. We wanna provide the right resources for our patients. We don't want them to have to go and search for those. So we've been working with our neighborhood services in conjunction with a lot of the health and human services that are available in our community, both nonprofit and for-profit agencies, in trying to find the right resources for these patients. So we wanna develop a very robust resource book for these patients. It won't, it will physically be a book, but it will also be electronic as well. So it's the most up-to-date information that we can provide for our patients. Certainly, we've seen this as the first step in creating that sustainable model. And we told you when I came back in May and previously in December, that was my goal, to go out and to develop that sustainable model. And I think this is certainly the first step with Phoenix Health Plan in developing that sustainable model. They don't wanna see it go away. They would love to see this continue and this being almost a model program for other agencies to be able to use. They are now at the table. They are talking to us. Everybody has a little bit more interest now that Phoenix Health Plan has stepped up. Abrazo West is certainly starting to talk to us more about seeing some of their patients. The Banner Health System is actually watching this very closely to see how this turns out. We certainly see this as being more fiscally responsible for our tax dollars that were afforded, and we hope that it really does reduce those unnecessary 911 calls. We wanted to decrease that burden on the emergency department. Certainly, when the critical patient comes in, we want a bed that's available for them, not being taken up by somebody that could be treated with another resource. We wanna provide that support to those vulnerable populations that we have in everybody's community, but specifically our citizens. We wanna be able to collaborate and maximize our resources that are out there. We think that's very important, especially in the healthcare arena, and really provide that outstanding innovative customer service delivery that our citizens deserve. We still have some challenges, those regulations with the state and federal government, and also the workforce challenges. But I really see that more as an opportunity for us, because as our employee base starts to gain more tenure and experience and age, we'll start to see certainly more injuries from them. So is this, could this be another pathway or another avenue for them still to be engaged in public safety work, but providing it in a different form, so more of a proactive visit through the community paramedicine? So again, something kind of to develop for years to come, but again, something that we wanna see is a sustainable model that would help support that. As I said, we've been working with legal on the sub-grantee agreement, and we're continuing to try to move that forward. Phoenix Health Plan is reviewing that agreement right now. But again, this sub-grantee allows us to share the money with the other cities pretty cleanly. Continue to identify those key stakeholders. Sun Health is another one that's just most recently stepped up in providing, wanted to provide free training to the community paramedics, along with the Crisis Response Network as well, for those behavioral health patients, to make sure that our providers have the right information. We wanna standardize that data. I spoke about Rio Rico being the collector of the data for across the state, so trying to stay in line with the data collection that they're developing. And we wanna continue to look for opportunities to publish our outcomes, because we feel like this is a great story to be able to tell. So I'll take any questions now about the community paramedicine, if we have any.
All right. First question? Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Well, first of all, something that I do see that will benefit our citizens, and that started with when I was Chair of Human, or actually not Human Services, Continuum Care of Homelessness. Something that we went through was called appreciative inquiry. And that's when you took, say, 100 homeless people, and you watched them for a year. And at the end of the year, say, only 20 of them were successful. 80 were still homeless. Rather than looking at the 80 that didn't succeed and what caused it, you looked at the 20.
Yeah.
And you said, what were the reasons that, you know, they prospered? Most of the time, it was handholding for that person and getting them through to the things they needed.
Right.
And it took such a burden off, you know, the entire tax system.
Right.
I see that as benefit what would happen with community paramedicine.
Yeah.
Couple of questions that I did have was, first of all, am I understanding this correctly? Are we, the city of Goodyear, the fiscal agent for all of this?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I may explain, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The one thing that we've heard time and time again from the different agencies, healthcare partners that are out there, including Phoenix Health Plan, is they don't wanna write multiple contracts. So they would rather just write one contract and then develop some type of a mechanism to be able to pay the other cities that were involved in. And I think because we had already been involved in this grant with Vitalist, that they saw it as an opportunity for them to be able to almost attach onto that grant, and then as Rourke was able to help us walk through that with the sub-grantee agreement, then being able to provide that vehicle to pay the other cities. Now, on the horizon, or if we start to look in the future, one of the things that I'm seeing as a positive is we're having very strong conversations with access. Access is the state's Medicaid system. And they are looking at a program called Treat and Refer. And we'll certainly bring that back to council as we get more towards the launch period of that. But as part of the Treat and Refer program, we would essentially become providers. We would be given a provider number within the access system. Now, that automatically allows the opportunity for the health system, health plans, insurances, hospitals, to then be able to provide that money directly to that provider number. So no longer would we have to be the fiscal agent anymore. So that, hopefully, that burden would get taken off us. The launch date they're looking at right now is October 1st, because that's the federal fiscal cycle, but it's also the healthcare cycle as well, fiscal cycle. We don't think a lot of agencies will be ready to go October 1st, but a lot of them will be able to start the registration process and then start the training process as well. So we see that as an opportunity in the future, as do the insurance plans as well. They, you know, their eyes lit up when we told them that. So they see that as a huge benefit. So hopefully, we won't always have to be the fiscal agent.
But, oh, I'm sorry.
Let somebody else have a question. Sheri?
I just wanna say, I like both of these programs, because I think it is going to save our taxpayers' money. Just the healthcare system is changing, and I appreciate the fact that you are looking at ways healthcare is changing and how to save the money. So from what you say, it sounds like the start date's gonna be October to kind of get it rolling?
Well, now, that's the access, I didn't wanna confuse you, but that's the access program. For our paramedics, our community paramedics, we're hoping mid-October launch, we'll finish the training the last week of September, we'll begin, start to do the outreach to the patients, and then hopefully start to see patients by the middle of October.
I have one quick.
That's our goal.
One other quick question for you. How long do you keep, I guess, I don't wanna say on the rolls, but how long do you continue to visit? Is it individualized, or how does that work?
What we're trying to do is make it an initial in-person visit with the patient, and then provide follow-up by phone. Now, certainly, there may be other issues that emerge, or resources that aren't being followed through with, and it may necessitate another visit by the crew. But ultimately, we'd like to try to do that one visit and then the handoff to the resource. The benefit of working with the Phoenix Health Plan is then we're handing that patient off to a case manager who can, you know, routinely follow up with them. We do have some of our volunteers that are willing to provide some of that very loosely termed case management for us, but we also see some of the medics as well, and some of their downtime during their day, calling back those patients that they've been seeing to just check on them, see how they're doing, and see what their progress is.
And if I could just follow up with the city manager, if this starts October for a year to October, how do we, if we say, hey, at the next budget year, this is really good, but we do our budget in June, how does that work?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so it would work, one is, we'll have more information over the next several months. And we are looking at this, and I believe Stan Homer, CEO of Abrazo West, had brought it up as well. We're looking at other providers for this, other funders for this. We're not looking at it hitting the city budget as of right now, but that's something we're going to evaluate, because it seems like there are a lot of providers at the table that are willing to fund this, and that's our goal.
I guess mine was, if there is no one else there, I just don't want it to get, oh, well, there's no one else to fund it, and then it was a great program, but no funding. If there's, how do we make sure if no one else picks it up, that we pick it up or whatever?
And great question. So if it is mid-budget year, so it's next November, and no one else does provide funding for it, then it would be, it would not be in the budget. It'd have to be potentially considered at that time, but it would also be at the end of a pilot program, and our commitment is, is just run through the pilot, nothing beyond that at this point. So it would require a lot more information before we could even make a recommendation before us, before council, or before management would recommend any other funding for or continuing the program.
Okay, thanks. Joe?
Yeah, I think this is a great story to tell. When it comes to the funding, I remember when Stan Holmes was here earlier, everybody wins on this. I think you're gonna get funding from the insurance companies. I think you're gonna get funding from the hospitals. You're gonna get a variety of grants out there, because everybody's getting squeezed now in the healthcare industry. Costs are going up, some of the providers are trying to squeeze. I know when I go to my doctor's offices, there's six or seven of them in there sharing the equipment. They got all these new specialties that are always coming onboard, so they're always looking for ways to be more efficient, because they're getting squeezed as far as some of the reimbursement. So again, I think it's a great story to tell. As you get farther down the road and get the stats, it would be nice to just make sure the public gets this message, because again, everybody wins on this. And the fact that you're visiting those out in the community, that may be visiting the hospitals a little regularly or whatever, you may actually end up saving their life, because that one time they go there, they may not be successful. So the fact you're proactive in that, I think it's a great thing for the community. So I appreciate the program.
And the health plans really like that we're looking at it from a regional perspective. That's the one thing that they've struggled with the other cities. A lot of the other cities, Scottsdale, Tempe, Chandler, they've all kind of stayed within their own city borders. We're the only ones, the five cities, that are looking at it from a regional perspective. So that has really raised the attention of the health insurances as well as the hospital systems, because their patients don't live in one city. You know, they come from multiple areas.
Bill?
Governing Magazine this month just produced a great article on community paramedicine that talked very positively about the effect that this is having. And when we talked about this in May, you know, my concern was where were our private partners? And they've clearly, you know, now stepped forward, which is a real positive for us. And the question that I had asked at that time was about the public policy reasons to do this. Why, why should we support the private provider network? But I think through the presentation and some of the written material that's been out the last six months or so, this isn't really about helping the hospitals keep their money. It's really about a healthier community, and when we start to look at it from a bigger perspective, these things become just the next evolution. You know, if you look back into the 1970s, why did we even get involved in EMS from a local government perspective anyway? That really wasn't, it was designed to be an emergent basis, not a public health perspective, but over the last 40 years, it's turned into, we're now a public health provider. So this all, you know, just seems to make some sense. I'm anxious to hear at the end, when you develop the rest of the measurements, what you're able to report. And I think particularly, and I'm quite honestly, I'm surprised we don't have it necessarily today, but what the cost per call is for those super-users. I know you were gonna look at it.
We've been working on it and working with Lisa to really define and then understand what that cost is. Now, what we do understand is that this is from a four-person engine company that responds right now, and these are in today's dollars. So we understand that our cost per call is $270 a call, four-person engine company going on all those calls that they go on. So if you extrapolate that out to the 674 calls those 81 patients produce, that's $181,000, almost $182,000. And then if you just look at it from a patient perspective, it's about $21,800. So it's a, it's a big chunk of, you know, into our budget, certainly, so.
And I appreciate you having the information tonight, that, you know, what we're really talking about is, we're talking about saving Goodyear taxpayers $181,000, period.
Right.
That's in real costs to us on a day-in and day-out basis, in addition to what we're gonna save the individual. So I'm looking forward to hearing the result of this. I'm glad our partners have come forward. So I guess we'll see you next October.
Yeah. Well, if I can just add on to, Councilmember Stipp said, I think the other piece that Lisa and I will look at a lot more closely is really was the cost per call for that community paramedicine, that two-person vehicle, for those non-emergent calls. So I think it'll be a nice compare and contrast. I don't know if exactly will be half of the 270, but it will be interesting to kind of see how that plays out.
Cheryl Lynn?
Well, to me, the thing that we as a city have is what we're offering for our citizens, because it's, for those of you who have been in this situation, you understand the fear and the uncertainty and the concern, and then immediately you come back from the emergency room, and you have questions, and you don't understand, you just don't understand. The system is very difficult to understand. And I see this as not just a money-saving, which is how I think we justify it, but I think the peace of mind that it brings with it to our constituents, you can't put, that's not taggable. But certainly, to turn our backs on it before we really, really don't think it works, I think would be a huge, huge mistake. And commend the leaders in this effort for sticking their necks out to bring it to us. We thank you for that.
Thank you. Dorian, you have a second question?
I think it was just the last part that, and I know we don't have the outcomes yet, but it's going to be truly looking at the issue of the medic itself. And I know that where we get shorthanded in our own staff and the overtime, and that play of, you know, making sure, it's gonna take a while to figure that all out, I understand. But that, you know, comes down to some real dollars and cents sometimes, and so.
It absolutely does. And I think one of my concerns, too, is from a longevity standpoint, is it sustainable to do it in that type of model, not only from a fiscal standpoint, but from a behavioral health standpoint for the employees? You know, are we overburdening them by having to do in this other program? So I think there's a lot of different ways to look at it. We're really excited about the opportunity and just feel really optimistic about just, you know, taking the fire department to a different level, so.
Oh, it's very exciting. I think it's great for our city to do this. Thank you.
Question is, so we have automatic aid. So, you know, the other cities come to our city.
Yeah.
And just kind of, how will that grow with that, or will it be isolated to our city, or?
Well, I think this regional approach that we're taking with the five cities, you know, we're all on the west side.
Right.
And we are teaming up where we can see some efficiencies there with Avondale and Goodyear teaming up. So it'll be kind of need to watch and see how that develops, the relationships, not only inside the vehicle, but how the relationship translates to the patients that we see as well.
I think it's best to get that out to the public, so they understand that.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question, so it isn't isolated just to us, and they misunderstand that.
Right.
So, yes, Bill?
Now that you mentioned the regionalization piece, since we provide fire protection for Litchfield Park, does this extend to Litchfield Park as well?
Yeah, just out of irony, I guess, we looked to see if there were any patients that fit the model that were inside the walls. No, not right now. So we'll continue to look at those numbers, but yes, it absolutely would. Yep. Okay, thanks.
Ollie, did you have anything?
Well, I've already shared with Chief that I'm working with the area agency on aging with our resource book, and we have spent several days now making sure that all the resources are current, the phone numbers are right, the addresses are right. And I also sit on the 211 board, we're doing the same thing with that staff. And I just think those two resources are going to be wonderful for you to use, not only for just Goodyear, but for all of the paramedic program, for the community medicine, because we have the referrals for the entire state in some of them, and definitely all of Maricopa County. So we're really excited about it, and we're doing all that we can to make sure that you're very successful from that end. The other part is your doing. You have to do all the rest. We'll just give you the resources that we have, that we know work, and that will help you refer folks, so that you can go to the next patient.
Yes, thank you.
Any other question? Any comments? Well, we wish you well on this. I think we're all 100% behind this.
Thank you.
And I think it's gonna change the look of our city even more than it is. We're called a quality city. We care about our residents, and this just states that. And yet, we are being cognizant of our budget, so that everybody can understand that, what we're spending on it and the worth of it. And I agree with Cheryl Lynn. I've been in the hospital through my life a number of times, and I think when you come out the first time, you get confused, because they're very quick and give you what you have to do, and you get home, and because you're not quite recovered, and then you start to recover. to recover and you look at the piece of paper and you think, I have no idea what they really want me to do. So, I think that's really important.
Yeah.
And it'll teach people who are consistently ill how to take care of themselves. It'll give them training. You know, you just kind of have retrained people. When you take them off the street, same way with people that become ill, that aren't used to being ill. And so, I think it's a super program, and we want this to be successful, so. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. It was very good.
Want to do the ambulance update as well?
Thank you, because I had questions on that this morning. All right, go ahead.
So, just from a history standpoint, we did a work session back in May of 2015 to review the ambulance feasibility study that we had conducted. As you know, the certificate of necessity or that CON is a fully regulated state ambulance industry. The Bureau of EMS regulates the ambulance service, so they set the rates for the cities. Currently, there are two vendors that hold CON authorizations to operate within the city of Goodyear. So, that is AMR, who had previously purchased Royal Metro or Southwest Ambulance. And now, just recently, Maricopa, or they've also been heard calling themselves Priority Ambulance, they have received a countywide CON to operate. They, on their application, they're more predominantly kind of focusing on into facility work, but they will take on 911 work as they bid on those programs. So, from a fire department perspective, since the last time, these are several of the agencies that have explored the CON or even started to move that forward. Peoria just received theirs. Gilbert Surprise has been operating in ambulance now for about 10 months in their city with good success. City of Tempe just had a very long battle with AMR and Southwest Ambulance, but they finally received their CON. Queen Creek has theirs. Sun City Fire just recently received theirs. And Mesa's had theirs as part of their... They got a grant for community paramedicine, and they applied for their CON and received it so they could start billing Medicare for the community paramedicine piece. They don't have plans at this point, but they are going to be moving forward to start transporting patients as part of their behavioral health program. So, they are moving that piece forward. The privates who have obtained their CON since we've met last is, again, AMR and Maricopa or Priority Ambulance. There are also other ambulance agencies out there like ABC and other smaller entities. They mostly focus on into facility work, don't really focus on the 911 work.
I'm sorry, what is facility work?
Into facility, so moving patients from hospital to hospital.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, sorry. So, we also put in there the response times, and on the left-hand side of that chart, you can see that it's the 10-minute on-scene 90% of the time compliance for the City of Goodyear contract. You can see how their compliance level is Southwest Ambulance or AMR as they progress down. Now, you can see the numbers are a little bit lower in January and February, and that's when they had made some changes to their staffing model. But since then, they've changed back. We have four ambulances now that are operating around the city, and so their on-scene time has increased. The code three on-scene 90% of the time is a state requirement for their CON, and you can see that they've met those throughout the time. And then there's, on the last column, there's the number of transports that have come out of the city of Goodyear over the last six or seven months that are up there. And then that's it for that one. So, to get any questions on the ambulance update.
Questions? Oh, Councilmember Zola?
Just a couple. You had several cities on there that have their own?
Yes.
Question for you. Can we get any financials on seeing from those cities on how they're doing? Will they share that information with us?
Uh, yeah, I think we can work with... You know, I would want to look for somebody that's similar to us from a... The one thing I worry about is the paramex, just to make sure that those are similar. And I know, just looking at the list, that probably Surprise and Peoria would be pretty close to us, Gilbert. So, Gilbert has not started operating yet. Peoria has the ambulances on order. They don't have people riding in the ambulance yet. Surprise has been operating for probably about the last, like I said, 10 months. So, I can see if I can get something.
It would be helpful just seeing numbers, you know, financials, because the numbers we've seen before were estimates and some study, but you have some that are up and running now. So, if we can get some hard numbers, I'd be curious to see what those numbers are.
Okay.
Second question. Is there any value, all right, and tell me, because again, I'm not familiar with your certificate of necessity, how that works. Is there any value of putting, of getting in the queue and then putting it kind of like in a... Like a CPA, you've got a license that's not active or whatever, you don't move forward. Can you get it in the queue so it's there but not activated, or once you go, you've got to go full boat? I'm not familiar with the process. Can you share that with me?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So, the way that DHS looks at it, it's a two-year process once you get the application in. And for the most part, Surprise wasn't as, was faster, but Peoria, Gilbert, and Tempe were right around that timeframe, 18 months to about the two-year mark. And you can certainly start the process. The cost is $125 to submit the application. Once you go through the process and they do decide to award the CON, as part of your plan in the CON is you can state how you're going to implement. But I've talked to the deputy director at the Bureau of EMS, and you cannot use it as a franchise, you can't franchise it out. So, you would have to have a plan of when you would put the vehicles in service, hire the personnel, et cetera. And Peoria's going through that right now. Gilbert's going through that right now. So, they're waiting, they're taking their time. And then also, City of Surprise, they're adding vehicles each fiscal year. So, you're not hitting the system or the budget all at once. It's over a period of time. And so, they're using AMR, Southwest Ambulance, to help them kind of pick up the other calls until they come online fully. So, it can be used as a stepwise process that over a period of time, you add services in, add ambulances in, and add personnel, and that's been done with success.
So, it's not a set time where it says you have to have a plan within one year of getting it, three years? It doesn't expire?
Right, right.
Another question. Those that are on access that get picked up?
Yes.
On the ambulance? Who pays them? We get, they get reimbursed through?
Yeah, so the state pays that, and I did write that down. So, currently, they're paying at about 69%, and that's a state-approved rate. So, if you had a $100 bill, they pay it, you know, $69 for that bill.
Question, I don't know what percentage, and maybe you can get some of those stats from the ones that you pull from the other, percentage of those that are on access that may be getting picked up, you know, from the ambulance services that the city run. Here's my question. Reason why I ask that is the ones that are in for profit, okay?
Yeah.
We're in an environment right now where a lot of the insurance companies, a lot of these reimbursers are squeezing the cost, okay? So, my question becomes into play, especially with the government side on the access. If they start squeezing that percentage of what they pay, and I don't know what percentage of pickup is access, does that create a problem of viability for the private ambulance? And again, I don't know the numbers. I haven't seen them. That's the only reason why I'm asking. But I'm just looking at it from a perspective, every time I turn around, and again, I use my doctor's office as an example, constantly what they're getting, and when I talk to my doctors, they're constantly getting squeezed on how much per visit, how much for this test, how much for that test. So, they've got to find ways to try to keep making themselves more efficient, more effective, and providing those services. Well, if a very high percentage of their pickup happens to be access or some type of government funding, and the government starts squeezing that percentage, does it become not profitable for them? So, that becomes an issue for our citizens. I just throw that question out.
Yeah. Interestingly enough, over the last 10 months, we've been collecting just types of insurance that our patients have. We don't want numbers. We just, we're interested in just the type of insurance. So, we have a very robust data collection system right now for our emergency medical service patients that we see. And about, interestingly enough, about 20% of our patients are on access. So, we would know that that would be, you know, certainly something that we would have to deal with if and when we ever got into that business. With regards to the private services, yes, that's, it's a huge concern for us because I think eventually, as a for-profit agency that are accountable to shareholders or they're accountable to their fiduciary partners, they're going to want to see return on their investment that they put in. We could be, at some point in time, essentially be left holding the bag and providing that, as a government agency, providing that service. So, that could happen. You know, we have a lot of changes coming up. We have a change in the president, so would you see a change in the Affordable Care Act? You know, other things that will come down the road. But I think the industry itself is at, almost at a little bit of a tumultuous time right now, the ambulance industry, and these providers are looking, the private providers are looking to find that dollar, that almighty dollar, where governments are in it for life. We're in it to serve the people, not necessarily to always create that next dollar, but could we find a way to make it cost-neutral on those types of events? So, it's something we're worried about. Fortunately for us, we have a backup plan in the event anything ever did happen, but it's something that I constantly think about.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback, because that's kind of one of my concerns as they start squeezing the, you know, the reimbursements for some of that. I would just want to make sure we have something in place. That's why I asked the question. Can you institute but put it on a hold or at least stretch it out for a long period of time?
Yeah.
So that you're not spending anything, but you've got something in the queue in case something goes south and they start squeezing it more and more. And they could say they're beholding to their stockholders, so if they're not getting the return on their investment, they may look at somewhere else to put their money, so.
Right.
I appreciate the feedback. Thanks.
Carolyn?
I, when I look at this, much of what Joe has just said was I was thinking and what Paul said. I mean, right now, this is an industry that's very tumultuous because of the, and very unknown what's going to happen with reimbursements. And so, I think we need to look at it carefully for that reason is because, you know, it's important, a very important issue because we're talking about life support, because these are emergencies, and generally speaking, we're talking about people who could be in a life-threatening situation. So, it is important, but it also is, we can't be in the ambulance business. So, it's how effective and how, and what's going to happen in the industry that we'd be watchful.
Molly?
Well, it's almost a perfect progression if we're going to do community paramedicine that we offer an ambulance service eventually. It's just, they go hand in hand. I know that there are a lot of fire departments that run their own ambulance service all over the country, and it must be working, otherwise they would not be doing it. And I honestly don't know that much about the funding part of it. That's something I would like to know, but I also know, I just used the ambulance recently, and I got a bill, and I called them, and they said, well, your insurance company took care of it, because I have three insurance companies. So, someone picked the whole thing up, which I was thrilled. But not everyone has that luxury of having that type. There's got to be some way, if we ran our own ambulance, that we would be able to take care of those folks that do not have any insurance, because you don't, when you come to a 911 call, you don't ask if I have insurance, you're busy trying to save my life.
Right.
And I don't know quite how that works, but I'm really interested in it, and I'd like to see how that works. And I'm really interested that perhaps we might want to talk about getting in line so that we're somewhat ready to go, but not really ready to go, if you know what I mean? Get the CON done and then figure out how we can actually put it together. But it makes sense, really. You're going to try to provide the whole health care to our community, and you're already responding to 911, and then you're taking care of them when they get out of the hospital, you know? So, it just, for it to run seamlessly, I think it can be done. We just have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, and, you know, with any healthcare business, there's always the chance of the unpaid bill, so, you know, there's always...
Well, you're always going to have that call, and we've just got to figure out how they do it. How do the hospitals do it? I mean, how does?
Take the debt on.
Yeah, they write that down.
Well, there you go, yeah. So, in all these cities...
We sit and listen to it. On the board, excuse me for interjecting like that.
No, no, you're right. You're absolutely right. I just don't know that much about it. I'd like to know how they do it.
Yeah.
To figure out how we do it.
And I think the good thing about the City of Goodyear certainly is, during the feasibility study when we looked at it, we do have a very strong insurance paramex here, so.
We do. We're lucky.
Many of our citizens are insured, so.
Yeah. And we'll take care of everybody.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Joanne?
Well, thank you, Paul. I mean, you know, I know when you originally brought the feasibility study to us, I don't know, it hasn't been a year, has it? I don't think it's been...
May 2015. It's been over a year.
Oh, okay. It has. And I know, there was hesitation at that time.
Sure.
It was like, it made sense, but at the same time, it's like, this is, this just was, we were too unsure. And so, it was like something that continued to be looked at and it had to make sense because we are doing this for the right reason. We're not trying to make a profit, but we've got to try to break even because we can't accumulate the debt, but like maybe a for-profit hospital could. We can't do that as a city. We've got to...
No profit here.
No, no. We have to know what some of those answers are.
Right.
And so, and I appreciate that you continue to look at, you know, crunching those numbers to see how does it all come into play and how to work. And I guess just kind of my follow-up to what Joe was asking about is actually putting in the application, which sounds like it's not a big deal, it's $125, no big deal. We get in the queue, so to speak. However, what I'm hearing is that you do that, and you are saying that this is the route we're going.
That we have a plan.
Now, and we don't know what that plan is yet. Now, maybe that plan takes us 10 years, you know, it steps 10 years from now. I don't know. But at the end of the day, the minute we do that, we are saying that we are going to take this over.
We're in the business.
So, I just want to make sure I understand this all thoroughly, and so, and I do think that it's something we need to continue to look at. I am happy in the sense of saying that, you know, when we were first looking at this, when Southwest Ambulance was going away, we were not hearing good things about AMR. We were worried that we were going to have patients waiting, you know, half an hour for, I mean, that was, that was the concern. I'm glad to see that it hasn't been that terrible.
Yeah, and we continue to have great conversations with our partners. They meet with us once a month, and, you know, they've been good partners, and a lot of them have stayed from Southwest Ambulance, so a lot of very familiar faces, and they, they're willing to work through issues with us right now.
Right. Well, I appreciate that, and I really do think that it's something that we'll continue to look at. Thanks.
I thought there were a lot of great... Oh, you go... No, Sherry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I didn't want to say, I do like the idea, and I think we need to go ahead and get their certificate, because if it's a two-year process, if we wait to get the plan and the process, it's going to take us, we're going to start getting behind, behind, behind.
Yes.
And if we can staff one ambulance and then another, I mean, if we can break it out, I think that's probably better for the budget. It kind of breaks us in. But logistically, I'm for the program, but I just have a couple logistic questions. Since we're doing a fire station study now, and we're talking about ambulances, is that something, when we talk about what type of station to build, that we'd want to make sure that we have room to put the ambulance in the fire station?
Well, typically, when we do build the station, it's three bays, it houses enough, it has enough bunk rooms and space for everybody, so it would be sufficient.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not going off on two tracks here, and that we have this great idea here, and it can all go together and everything.
Yeah.
And then the other question, the personnel. So, we have paramedics now, we have, would have paramedics in the ambulance.
Correct.
Would we need to run a truck with the ambulance on all calls? So, the truck would go there, but then would be able to leave, and then the ambulance?
Yeah, so the idea would be really the model that we've most recently switched over to in the last year with Southwest Ambulance and AMR is that our engine or the ladder gets the call first, and if it's going to be a transport, then we bring out a transport provider. Now, there are certain situations where it's a drowning, cardiac arrest, respiratory, a report of a bad motor vehicle crash, rollover, that they'll send the ambulance at the same time. But what we've, what's occurred from calling the ambulance second is that we now have a greater reliability of that ambulance being made available for us. So we would follow the same type of a principle. It would, it would be a civilian models, what we've previewed in that feasibility study. We would have a medic and an EMT on each ambulance. And then on the critical patients, chest pain, cardiac arrest, respiratory problems, one of the medics from the engine would jump off and provide double medics to that patient, so.
And then the medics, the paramedics who are on the ambulance?
Yes.
They're cross-trained. I mean, if we had, someone got hurt on an inju, I mean, could those cross out or they're separate? They would be separate.
They would be civilian. We kind of terminate as somebody that we could look at in the future for a firefighter, EMT, or paramedic opening. But no, they would be civilian, single role, paramedics or EMTs.
Can I ask it? I don't know. So if this is a dumb question, I apologize.
Yeah.
Why they wouldn't be cross-trained or we could use them or is that just not-
We could, we could certainly hire a sworn model. You're going to see a higher cost on a personnel.
I didn't know if there was a reason or-
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to see a higher cost for a firefighter, medic staffing in ambulance. Now, Peoria has gone, they're going with that model. Surprise is using civilian. Sun City is using civilian. Gilbert will be using civilian when they go online. But Peoria is actually, they're attempting to go with a sworn model. So we'll kind of see how that goes. They have a high volume, much higher volume than we do in our studies. They're around 25,000 calls a year. We're right around nine, so. That volume is certainly going to help them.
And then one more question to educate me on this and I apologize again.
Sure.
So if, if, for Peoria, how they're doing it, then do they lose the individual off the truck still as well or?
On a critical patient, they would, yeah.
You just, you need the number of people there.
Yeah.
Support, okay.
Correct.
No, I think it's a great plan and I look forward to us getting the process started so we can start getting it in the budget and not just have a huge bill we can try to like get into. I think it'd be great for the citizens, so thank you.
Yep.
Any other question? Bill?
I'm just trying to keep it, trying to keep it from happening. The, I'm glad that we're having this discussion again. When we talked about this last May, we had AMR, which was a separate company from Rural Metro Southwest, and this Maricopa ambulance.
Right.
So we had three private providers.
Right.
Now, AMR has absorbed Southwest, so now we're back to this two-private provider scenario.
Right.
And Maricopa ambulance, you said, is predominantly focusing on interfacility.
Correct. As, as they start to build their company here, their presence here, they are focusing right now into facility work.
And the interfacility work is really where, quite honestly, the money is.
Yes.
That's what sustains the model.
Yep.
So if there's not a lot of money in the 911 side, my fear is that the bottom line is going to drive all of the decisions and they may be, we may be in a very nice honeymoon period now, but as we go forward, you know, much like everyone has said, we probably need to make sure we're in a little better position than we were 18 months ago. And all of this is going to take some time, so hopefully, and our retreat, which is coming up in six weeks, and we talk about the strategic plan, this becomes a strategic plan initiative that we cover over the next three years. So hopefully we'll have some more information, decide whether we, how we want to pursue it, what steps we want to take. Personally, I'd like to see it come forward as an initiative. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, at the strategic plan process. Because this, if there's anything that meets the definition of strategic, it's this.
Well, you took my thunder away, but that's okay.
All right. That's why you didn't want me to talk.
He's the planner guy.
Yeah. I would like it to come, I would like it to be at our retreat. I think it needs to be discussed. And, and we have to be so financially responsible to the taxpayer.
Yep.
So if you take your heart in it and your emotion in it, you say, okay, go ahead. Let's just do it all right now. Get the con, let's get those trucks, let's get those ambulances, and we're going to go for it. Bottom line is, we have to answer to that, to our public, and we have to show them that this is beneficial.
Yep.
And the way it is could be change in administrations. We don't know what's going to happen with the health program.
Correct.
This could be, this could be good for the public in, during that confusion time, but everybody's promising to do whatever they think they're going to do. So I think it's smart for us to be really informed on this and keep it at a point where we can just, okay, let's go with it, you know? So if we have it there and we can do it at the right time, so.
Yes, Brian?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Campbell had a comment.
I was just going to ask you, Mayor, if, since we're all in agreement to talk about this at our retreat, could we also request that chief be available to ask questions if we needed it? I mean, can we, can he do that at our retreat or is it only for us?
Because we may have some really deep questions that we need him to give us guidance on.
What do you think, city manager, sir?
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, the retreat is absolutely council's.
Yeah, it's our decision.
So this, this, this week, this week, you'll actually be meeting with the facilitator and a lot of what you talk about during that process is identifying what you want to be on the agenda.
Okay.
So we're working through that this week. Absolutely, it's fair. I mean, the approach to the retreat is we give you enough information and then we kind of peel off and let council really discuss initiatives because it really is about councils working together to really develop policy initiatives. So you would have that opportunity of ask questions of staff at that time, certainly, but the retreat will really take on what you want it to. Now, we are planning, if I can plant a seed, there, we are planning and having strategic action plan as part of that and this, as was mentioned, could be one of those initiatives. It's identified, but again, up to council. And Mayor, if I may, so a couple of things, just to reinforce what I've heard and if we don't have this quite right, please let me know. And you did a good job of summarizing, just want to ensure. We will continue to monitor the service by AMR as well as Maricopa Priority Ambulance. So what you saw here today, we'll keep adding the detail that comes as far as their performance. We'll also continue to reach out to the cities that have gone through the CNO process. And the information is, there's not a lot of it available, as the chief pointed out. It's one of those things, as information is available, we will, we will pull that together. And so that's a commitment too, as far as looking at the financial impacts that the other cities are experiencing. And then the other, and I do want to point out, the fire station study, we believe we'll have results back, Chief, in November. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, so the, the end of November, right before Thanksgiving, we'll get the report back and then we're going to sit with a work session on the 12th of December.
So, so that'll, that'll be coming down as well.
We were all hoping earlier, but, okay, okay.
Did you say December?
December 20.
Joanne?
Good question to add to, to that discussion for the strategic, well, strategic plan slash retreat. I think Councilmember Stip brought up a pretty big, important item that I did not realize, and that is the mechanisms of what this will be successful with. If it's just 911 or if it is transport, which does help even the bottom line, that's important information that I think we should also be looking at and what that means to the whole, whole circle of everything that's happened, so it makes sense too, so.
Yeah, well, we can certainly include that, that piece of the argument in, as well.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Bill?
If I can help maybe lay that groundwork just a little differently, that the avenue to stop a long fight like Tempe had in getting their C of N, maybe to trade the interfacility with the private provider, let them keep it, and we do the emergency work like we're doing now.
But I thought you said that didn't make sense.
No, those, the private providers, that's what they want. They, they do the 911 stuff because it's there, but they really want the interfacility.
See, I took it that, I took it that if you didn't do that part-
No, no, no.
You were going to lose.
I think in the, in the state of Arizona, and this is just my opinion, but in the state of Arizona under the C of N scenario, the private providers who now own all of the C of Ns will not want to give that up. So we will be in for a protracted fight where I know it's been successful with some of the other people on that list who have negotiated with the private provider to not fight their C of N is because they've given them the interfacility work.
Well, that's why this is called strategic plan.
Yeah, so it, so if that, if, you know, I kind of saw where you were going, so I want to lay that out and also give the, you know, if everyone's in agreement with that, it kind of gives the chief, I probably, I would imagine, a little sigh of relief because he doesn't have to fight them for it.
No, I didn't understand.
Sigh of relief.
I didn't understand the funding of it that way, so.
But it becomes a really, it becomes important for us to perhaps negotiate that with them.
I thought all along we were only talking about the 911 transport. I never dreamed you were even inferring the, the transport like I had to do with my husband.
Yeah, no, I wasn't.
From facility to facility.
I was not.
Okay, yeah, because I'm only really, I'm really excited about the 911 transfer.
Yeah, the 911, you know, and I don't-
Yeah, let's just, you guys were going on about it, but let me get Joe in here. He had another question and then, well-
Okay, Joe, you got another, oh, sorry.
No, just, just a comment. What I also, I also heard was there seemed to be, unless I was mishearing out there, some consensus of exploring what's the upside to go in ahead and putting something in, even if it's 125 and it takes 10 years to put the plan in, and if for some reason we don't go forward, we withdraw it, as opposed to just waiting and waiting till something hits the fan, so to speak, and then figure out now what do we do? So, you know, that's what I was hearing from some of the others, what do we got to lose for the 125, so.
That's what you were hearing.
Okay, I just-
I think you're right.
I wasn't quite sure if I heard that clearly from the manager. I just wanted to make sure that we were. That's what I-
Does the city put it in?
Could you wait, this is, Bill, you're, Bill, did you want to finish what you were saying? I cut you off when I, all right. It's just that when we speak up like this, we're kind, go ahead, Wally.
Who pays for it? Does the city do it or fire do it? I mean, that's all I ask.
It comes out of the fire department budget.
Well, I know, but who?
It's what y'all comes up. Yeah.
It's the, it's the same budget.
I'll write the check, Phil.
I was going to ask you to write the check.
That'll be my donation. But I just, do we do it as a city?
Yes, the city Goodyear would apply.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's all I wanted to know.
Yep.
Brian?
Okay, so I will try one more time. We will continue, as I said, to monitor the performance of the providers. We will also look at the financial impacts of the different cities. It sounds like it may be something that will be talked about by council to add as initiative to put it into the strategic action plan. And then there has been, and you're absolutely right, there has been an interest in going forward. We can do it a couple of ways. One is, is go forward immediately. The other is, is what does it really take? What does that mean to apply for it? Yes, there is a $125 fee. What else is involved in that? So it, really try to get direction from council. Is that something where we pull the trigger? You want more information, more evaluation as we look at what other cities are doing? And, and that's a part that is, that I'm still not certain of.
Cheryl?
What I kind of heard from everybody was, let's go ahead and start the process because if we wait for Peoria to get up and as we go through, I mean, we could start it, it's not going to be done by the retreat by any means, but maybe if we start getting the application, start getting our information together, at least we've started the process. Every, you know, we wait another six months for someone else and another eight months for someone else, we're going to get pushed down and it's such a long, it sounds like it's a really long process. I don't think we lose anything, but let's just print it out and start looking and gathering stuff at least. Let's start. Got to start, take baby steps. Let's start somewhere.
Yes, Cheryl?
Well, I don't think that the, that the six weeks until we have our retreat and a more thorough discussion and decision is, I think it'd be more appropriate to go forward at that time than to start now after this discussion.
Any other comments?
If that's the will of the council at that time.
Yes. Bill?
Yeah, I think if, if we're truly talking about being strategic, then we need to make sure we have all the facts because once we apply, we're in.
Well, I didn't say apply. I said, let's just print it out, let's look at it so we at least know what it is and start getting stuff and seeing what we need.
I'm-
I think you can explain the-
Yeah, I'm under the impression that we kind of already know what that looks like